Good evening. Welcome to the June 7th, 2021 Merrimack School Board Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we move on to the Guidelines for Public Participation, and since this is our last school board meeting prior to graduation, I just wanted to take a moment and give a little early congratulations to our 2021 grads, and thanks to all of the administration teachers and all the way along the way that got them to this point. It's certainly an exciting part of the school year. Next up is Guidelines for Public Participation. So even though we are back in person here in the Matthew Thornton Room for our school board meetings, we understand that many community members may not feel comfortable coming here in person. Therefore, we will allow public comments to continue to be sent in an email. I think that's something we probably need to revisit soon as to how we move forward, but as of tonight, it's still this way in next week or next meeting. To do this, you may send an email to publiccomment@sa26.org. Again, that email address is publiccomment@sa26.org. We do require your name and address for the record on such documentation. Based on the amount of information we received tonight, our goal is to always read off verbatim the comments as we receive them. If the comments become too heavy in volume, we would just have to not read public comments into testimony. It's really an all or nothing proposition. Regardless, we will put all public comments in our minutes for tonight's meeting, but we would not be able to read them all tonight if we can't read them all. I'd just like to be sure to address this upfront in case we find ourselves in that position. Shannon, do we have any public comments?
We have two. One has not provided an address, but I have emailed that individual. She did email us on the 18th, so I'm not sure if she's going to see it in time, but I have requested an address so we could read it into public comment later this evening. But we do have a second that came in this evening from Rachel Papke at 67 Tinker Road. And Rachel, thank you for the phonetics because I have said it wrong every time I've mentioned your name. So thank you. Good evening. In lieu of not being able to attend tonight, I first would like to thank the board for having Adam Rubin from Two Revolutions present at the May 17th School Board Meeting. His presentation was an important piece of understanding what their company provides as a partner slash consultant when working with school districts. I believe that Mr. Rubin said himself that this process will require leadership and staff buy-in to energize the process of helping support the move toward our future of learning. To that extent, I would ask, should the board vote to approve moving forward with hiring slash partnering with Two Rev that they consider making his presentation and other applicable information easily accessible on the district website? As a parent with students in the district, I could easily navigate to find the Two Rev presentation on the MSD website, but it took a bit more work to find the video presentation via Merrimack TV. This most likely deterred some from watching, which would result in loss of key information. Having the May 17th Two Rev resources available on one website allows ease of use for all stakeholders. Please also consider establishing communication regarding Two Rev with staff and leadership should the vote to move forward occur. I believe it would be beneficial to supply the educators and leadership teams with as much information that the board knows of at this time in order to start to energize the process and capitalize on the buy-in that Mr. Rubin spoke of. It would be unfortunate if our district lost any of our talented educators slash leaders because they did not have the pertinent information about Two Rev and felt they did not want to be part of a now unknown process. Collaboration with all stakeholders, to include the students, families, and community, is key, but I believe that the educators and staff should receive information as soon as possible. Again, I thank the board for allowing Mr. Rubin to come present to the community during the 17th of May School Board Meeting. His presentation provided context to understanding what Two Rev's role will be, as well as a high-level look at what to expect should the board approve partnering with this company. Thank you for your time and consideration, Rachel. And as of right now, I do not have the second address, so we have one official public comment.
Thanks, Shannon. So I will open the floor up regarding the topic, the board's final decision on Two Revolution. Yes, whoever would like to speak?
Well, I'll say that I'm really excited about what Two Revs can offer us. And I'm excited for the fact that with so many transitions, with a new superintendent, with a new high school principal, with us just coming out of this COVID situation, I'm excited that Two Revs can bring partnership to our team as they move forward with their innovation and rethinking and reimagining how education can look in Merrimack. So I'm very excited what the partnership with Two Revolutions would mean for our district.
I would add to what Jenna said that I'm excited that there's two main components that are so important to deciding the future, the community input and the teacher, faculty, staff input, the fact that they get a say in redesigning professional development and all those things. Not to say that hasn't happened in the past, but just kind of coming together as one in that vision, that common direction, to work on those things together. It's exciting, you know, as I see from a teacher perspective. But as a community member, I think for those who don't have children in the district, it's an opportunity for them to have a voice as well and that parents will get to have their voice and be heard clearly through all the various processes that Two Rev provides. And so I think it's a unique opportunity at a unique time in the history of Merrimack to design this process with so many stakeholders.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we contract Two Revolutions.
A seconded by Lori Rothaus. Any other comments regarding it, Shannon?
Would you mind adding to the motion up to what amount we are contracting for? Because right now, it's, I think, what, is it $76,000? Would you mind amending your motion?
I amend my motion to, I move to contract Two Revolutions up to $76,000.
And do you resecond, Lori Rothaus?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to speak to that motion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-abstain, one. That carries 401. Next up is the update on the Real Parents Survey. Bill Morris and John Fribizio.
Thank you for your patience and thank you for allowing us tonight to come before you and present the Real Academy and our survey that we did. And before I begin, though, I want to thank the board, the administration, the educators, and the students and families out there. It's been a year of a lot of change, a lot of adaptation, a lot of innovation. We've done a lot to really think thoroughly how to teach students in a bifurcated system, find a way for students to have access to their learning. And I credit all of those people for really being part of it. You will see tonight, we will describe kind of what it looked like this past year, what our survey results look like, and then we'll move forward with a little bit about kind of what decisions for our future does Merrimack need to make when it comes to remote learning. So I'll turn it over to Bill Morris, our Director of the Real Academy.
First, I'd like to say that, you know, the problem is because you can't see people's faces, so you've got to look at the eyes of nobody's eyes are smiling. It's great to see all of you, right? And, you know, it's interesting. It's been neat to do something different on my 20th year in the district. And so, and I would have to say that, you know, thanks for supporting an initiative that's, you know, that's, you know, out of the box, I guess. And so, so we just wanted to give you a little kind of, you know, taste of what has been and like Ebenezer Scrooge, the, you know, you know, close to Christmas past, present, future, all of it kind of rolled in, right? So during this past year, we were able to collect data, both qualitative and quantitative. And the kind of qualitative data that we collected included parent feedback. One of the things that was unique about the model was that, you know, teachers and parents who participated felt like there was almost a barrier removed. You know, the idea of zooming into someone's home, you know, back and forth just took away any kind of, you know, awkwardness. You know, conversations happen, parents shared with teachers, teachers shared with administrators. And so we also collected student reflections. Teachers would ask, you know, their students to kind of share about how the experience has been. Also educators, I love the idea of just voice and, you know, in the voice of all constituents, parents, students, teachers, and that's what we tried to do this year. And so we often would check in with the educators about, you know, how things were going for them. And then the last one is program highlights and artifacts, you know. And as you travel on a journey, you know, you collect, you know, whether it's postcards or photos or, you know, or other trinkets. And in this same journey, we, you know, we had collected things. And they might have been, you know, agendas and presentation items and things like that. And so that was kind of the qualitative piece of the data collecting. The other thing I just want to share with you all is through this slideshow of PowerPoint, you're going to see visuals. Every visual was created by one of our National Honors Art Students at the high school. We worked with the remote art teachers to get some samples, or examples of possible logos that we could use for the program. And so I wanted, you know, in this visual way, these students' voices to be captured. So I just wanted that kind of noted in there. You know, we couldn't capture all of their names, but we captured their work here. And so I'm just going to move on to the next slide. So in addition to qualitative data, we wanted to share with you some quantitative data. We had 61 professional staff participate this year at some point being fully remote. They included classroom teachers and guidance staff and unified art staff and also people like speech and language paths, but really the whole gamut of professional educators in the district. In addition, we had 45 support staff that worked with the students in the remote program full-time, at least part of the year. And so we know during this pilot of the Real program, we know that, you know, the teachers that were in this program, they worked tirelessly to support the students. The remote staff, the remote support staff had done the same as well. Okay, so just, let's see. So in terms of quantitative data, the number of students that were served during this 2021-22 school year, in September, we had 733 students participating in the Real program. And by today's date, we have 563 students still participating. And that number of students presently, it's comparable to the number of students that are in the upper elementary school. So we think of numbers. We really met the needs of a whole school load of children. So this pie chart here shows you the breakdown of families whose children are seeking to participate remotely again this year. We had a survey and 821 responses out of about 3,800 students in the district. And 39 of those students's choice would be to learn remotely next year. And so one of the things that this pie chart doesn't capture is that a good number of those students are students with identified needs. And so, but even with those needs, their families, they feel that the remote learning that they experienced this year met their needs. And so that's just something that we need to keep in mind in terms of how we move forward supporting them. So what you have on the slide here are how the numbers break down per level. What you see here is the majority, or the majority or the largest number are at the high school level with 19 students. And in this slide here, what this speaks to is the home school of the student for this past school year. And so, and so those, so what's interesting on this one here is that we have a charter, a student that learned in a charter school and one in a private school that are seeking to learn within the Merrimack School District remotely next year.
Thank you, Bill. As you see in our data, it's a smaller number, I think, than we maybe would have expected when we surveyed, considering that we're over 500 students now. But it's a change in time, and there's good things happening. And we're seeing a lot of things opening up. And we're seeing a lot of, you know, society moving back towards some what they consider normalcy. I'll say that moving forward, I'm not sure what normal is. And we'll say that as a group, I think, for all of us, because we've learned a lot during this pandemic time. We really have. And I think that the students and families that have requested remote learning for 2021 will be included in our classrooms through concurrent learning. I think that that was part of what we said during our budgetary process to support this program. And I think that as of now, that's our plan to move forward as a team. I think Real Coordinator with Bill, he'll be in place, continue to collaborate with principals, support the families' individual needs, training with the family this year. Bill and Heather Barker ran a support group that met once a week and really talked a lot about, you know, how to support your child at home and remote learning. And we also did a lot of online training that we made available to families this year as well. That'll continue. Course offerings, this was a big question last year. And I want to be upfront that we've had a lot of communication at all levels, and we will offer our full schedule to those with a concurrent process. And I want to make sure I say that twice, that we will do that. I think that was one of the things that last year came out of that. We heard that feedback through the investment of our, of our energy, of our educators to learn, our technology that we purchased through ESSER funds, and our ability to adapt, change, and be innovative. We were able to use some concurrent learning throughout the year. So parents this time around were asked to commit for the semester, so it's the half-year. And I want to point out that even though they committed for the half-year or things change, we're not sure where we're going to be when it comes to beginning of the year next year. We know that we have a number of families that have committed to remote. We're not sure what would happen once, you know, possibly policies change around masks and around what our protocols are and all those things. That may change some thinking of people. So we have to be aware of that. So the process in place that was there last year was our online form, allowing parents the ability to go on, fill the form out, submit it to the principal, the principal contacts them, and they have a conversation about their individual student. And again, I'll say again, the individual student, and that's what the key is here. Communication, again, our partnership, Zooming, 360 cameras. Our Canvas is in place, K-12, and ever improving. And we're working on doing some protocols to do some symmetry between all grade levels with that. And then our remote students, of course, will have access to all of our social, emotional learning supports through our SoCal team, and that'll continue. So looking forward, Innovation UDL approach. I think that this is really where we are, Universal Design for Learning. It's been our educational framework. It's based on science. It includes guidelines. It helps all of our teachers develop lessons that look for barriers. Again, the word is individual, and you'll see it highlighted here because we have 39 individuals, that their education is very important to us. And I think along with the other students in our district, they're as equally important to us. And I think that we have to make that effort and continue along our way to continue with our UDL teams, continue to support all of our learners. So that is our next step where we are. And now I'll turn to marketing to talk about some future decisions that need to be made.
So as I mentioned at previous meetings, our district has been talking about, in fact, leading innovation for quite some time, most notably in the Real Academy, when we recognized the need to have a coordinator to focus specifically on the needs of that master cohort-sized group of students who, because of the pandemic, elected remote learning, in addition to the teachers who themselves requested it and needed to be accommodated for that. So much so that the Commissioner of Education has come to Merrimack, has worked with Bill extensively, and has really invited the district into additional communication and supports, and perhaps John and Bill can talk about that briefly, recognizing that innovation. So that's a very important thing that we have done relative to innovation. The question, the decision point going forward is whether or not the district will, how it will choose to handle some of the things that we've learned relative to remote learning. So we have a significant investment in technology that we invested in in response to some board suggestions when we were looking to the winter and trying to increase exposure to live learning. And so that investment produced the opportunity for us to provide concurrent learning. And the question is, will we continue to leverage those resources to support innovation? Bill and John talked about the 39 students. We always knew that COVID would end mercifully. And when it does, what do we do with what's left? And one of the things that's left is an opportunity to really, again, be innovative around things like, as you see up there, extended learning opportunities, internships, alternatives to suspension. At the moment, we, like most schools, remove a child from education when they're suspended for poor behavior. That doesn't seem terribly forward-thinking. And so if we were to include a coordinated program using resources we've already invested in, then perhaps that could be a way to continue our innovation. In any event, if I had chosen to remain here, that would have been something I would have really worked with the board a lot about. And I just offer it to you as continued decision points. The board should be commended for putting the Real Coordinator position into the budget this year. So we're fortunate that it exists, and we're very fortunate that we have Bill, who has worked so hard, along with John, to make a very good, meaningful experience for the students who the pandemic required needed to be home. So in any event, those are some of the things to consider. I would also, Bill, we could just move to the next one, just in summary. We are committed to providing remote education for those students, number being small, and multiteerred levels of support for those students electing it in the way that John and Bill described. We'll also work to be flexible, making adjustments in learning for those students as we move forward. And as we've said all along, we're going to continue to assess and learn from experiences and lessons during the pandemic to achieve continuous improvement. That's what we've been about, and that's what we're going to continue to be about. Bill, I'll turn it to you for a wrap.
I just want to mention one other thing because, before I finish up here, but I just want to highlight a group of parents who went on a journey this year with Heather and I to do a book study on a book called Distance Learning Playbook for Parents. And so I just want to note that because, and, you know, they're busy lives. They took time to read the book and then meet or not. So, you know, so here we are. I love quotes. And so this first one here, "They cannot stop me. I will get my education if it is in the home, school, or anyplace." Malala, and Malala was a young lady who almost lost her life in her fight to have an education. And secondly, when the Real program began back in early fall, I had come across this quote that I thought, what a great way to kind of put things in perspective. "The secret of getting ahead is getting started. The secret of getting started is bringing your complex, overwhelming tasks into small, manageable tasks." And then starting on the first one from Ma Twain. And so with that, you know, we would like to open up for questions, and thank you for your time tonight.
Shannon?
First, thank you. It's been, I think, a great year for parents. We could see that feedback coming through for those who are choosing Real Academy. I think in our year, my year as on the board at least, I just remember, you know, getting testimony, whether it be in the grocery store, where you say, you know, if a kid gets suspended, they get what they want. If they didn't want to be in school and that got them suspended, they get what they want. But at the end of the day, you still have to get them to learn. So this actually accomplishes a large goal by keeping this structure in place and having the system in place to make sure that there's continued learning for that as well. And you hit on a big thing. I think it's always been a passion, point of ours is out-of-district placements. You know, when the classroom just is not a good environment for the student, but the student is, you know, willing and able to learn, that they just need an alternative environment, but they don't want, you know, necessarily a different curriculum. You know, there's still a lot of good that they can get from the Merrimack School District, but we just didn't have that perfect situation to do that. So those are two areas I think we've talked about for many, many years, that this role can help to foster. So that's, I think, great news. I am a little surprised as well that the number that came back is as low as it was. But I do think that, you know, watching the news right now and the cases plummeting at the rate that they are has been probably a great comfort to most.
I think, Shannon, too, one of the things when we had the survey put to families, I think some of them struggled with having to make a decision so soon. But you really needed them to so that schools could make classes and determine staffing. And some of them also struggled with, I don't know what, you know, if there'll be a mask policy in the fall or not. And that could kind of weigh on their thinking. So I think that, you know, played a little bit into that.
I mean, definitely, I would have to say that what we have to do next is, I think, when we looked at it, I noticed you saw some that were coming back from charter schools and private schools as well. But then those who may have elected homeschooling or home educating, I think is what our commissioner prefers it be called, so I will use that term. But for those who are home educating, that I think they have to check in with us on adequate progress, those kind of things that would give the opportunity to have real structure, but then give them the environment in which they are able to thrive and learn. So, you know, if there's even services around that, because I think when it comes to homework, and I'm kind of interested to know if there's an opportunity in this role to do that because, again, we're talking about concurrent learning. But for those who wanted to do a true homeschool, maybe an independent study-type environment, or the Real Academy can offer them the supports, checks, and balances as well to give them that environment where they are not streaming into a classroom necessarily because they are choosing to home educate for whatever reasons they want, whether it be the social aspect, whatever. But if there's opportunity to even fold that environment in to offer them that kind of, you would get a Merrimack diploma. of, you would get a Merrimack diploma, you know, all of the, all of the good things that come from being connected to the public school community, but not necessarily where you would be forced into a classroom environment that is not ideal for your child. So I'm interested to see if there's even more that we can dig into this. But that's, I think you create a great foundation to be able to explore those avenues. I'm sorry to do that. Anyway, so I've never done that in many, many years, but, but that saying, so those are my thoughts about what you've presented tonight, and I think where it can go, but I think it's definitely a start, a big one. So thank you for your, for your information. It's great information to have, and look forward to more to come.
Shannon, go ahead.
Shannon?
So I just had some practical questions, just, so in looking at these numbers, it says, I'm just looking at this slide number eight. It says, "Students and families who requested remote learning for 2021 and 2022 will be included in school populations through concurrent learning." So just to be clear, that means the kids are going to be at home, they'll be assigned a classroom teacher who's in the classroom, and they will be zooming in to participate in the class in that way through the use of the cameras that we purchased. Is that correct, at all grade levels?
So, it is correct, but the variance viability in, in grade level. So we're not going to have probably kindergarten or six and a half hours a day on their camera. And I just want to be clear, because sometimes when we, when we generalize, I want to make sure that I'm clear. It's going to be by that, that partnership with the family. The nice thing about these numbers is it allows the partnership a lot more. It's not the mass. So it's going to be what fits your schedule? How do we do this? What are certain things that are requirements? What are things that we can be flexible about? And I think that'll be throughout, and I really think it will be. But the idea is the technology, the infrastructure, having canvassed K to twelve, and, and the yeoman's work that Nancy Rose's team has done to make that happen, in a year's time, it's pretty amazing that that takes implementation sometimes three to four, three to four years. We did it in, in eight months, and that's, that's pretty amazing. So that platform being in place allows for the flexibility and adjustability that we have, along with the, with the cameras that we have, the, the, the classroom-based video three sixty cameras. That allows for multiple flexibilities and, and things. And with these type of numbers, you can be flexible. It's not teaching ten and ten. It's, it's a different story.
Yeah. I love that. And then the reason I ask the question, though, is because as of this year, those cameras were only available, I think, fifth grade, is that right? Fifth grade and up? So we are going to redistribute some of those cameras so that they can be used at the elementary level. I think that was really kind of the core of my question. Yes, that's what's going to happen. Okay, great. Then my other question is, are we going to, maybe this is more curiosity than anything else, are we going to cluster those kids? So are we going to, let's say we have one second grader, I mean, I'm not even looking at the numbers here, but like at Thornton's, and one at Reed's and whatever, are we going to put them, like, is there going to be one teacher at Reed's with one student in second grade that's remote, and then one at Thornton's? Are we going to kind of redistribute them? You know what I'm saying? Are we going to put them together at one school?
So...
Are we still talking about that? It's okay if we don't know.
Thank you for that.
I'm just curious.
Because we're still, this is as of last week, the survey. So it's really, we're still in placement right now. So I don't want to misspeak because I haven't had that opportunity to reconnect after numbers have really come out with our team. And I think it's an important, it's a team decision about how we do this, especially, you know, having twelve years myself been one of those three. When there's three elementary schools, you've got to have somewhat of similarities and do some things together and collectively. So that conversation has just begun. What makes sense, again, for the, back to that word individual, I, I may be saying it a lot tonight, but that's really the key of what this is. What does that individual need, and what is it? And Bill mentioned that we have a lot of, a large majority of these students that have some type of educational plan that's in place for them. And those needs become very important in placement. Those needs become very important in team decisions, including the parents. So all those things are still factors to consider as we move forward. It's about the individual child, individual student.
Absolutely. It just, while we're considering the whole picture, and I know that I'm not saying anything that you guys aren't already considering, but having taught in a classroom during the pandemic, where I was doing remote, and, you know, I was doing that, it's really, really, I mean, I'm not telling you guys anything you don't know, so difficult for the teacher. So obviously, I'm assuming you're going to give some individuality to, even to your staff people, to say, who do you think can manage this well? And then if there is the ability to, even across the elementary schools, even though technically one might be in this school and one might be in this school, to put it together so that we decrease the stress on the teachers that have to execute this, which is super difficult, especially if they are on an individualized educational plan. If we can have consideration for that, first of all, again, not, not saying anything, I know you guys aren't one hundred percent already considering. But to me, it's really important that that is a huge factor, because it's hard to have one kid in this room and one kid in this room when you're doing the same thing. If you can combine that and decrease the stress on as many teachers as possible, all for it.
I so appreciate you bringing that up and, and saying that, I really do, because it's important, that's transparent, it's out there, that really, all those considerations and factors are in place. And again, we've even talked about, you know, trying to look at class sizes, and if someone has to concurrent learn, can we bring that number down a little bit? So maybe it might have been typically a class of eighteen, maybe we give them fourteen that year, you know? And, and their partners and their friends have to share, because that means theirs go up to maybe nineteen, you know? And we have to, we have to do, have that flexibility, and we're in this together. And I think that's the biggest part that's important, that, that, you know, a lot of years in this district in multiple roles, and I know there's nothing more important than relationships and partnerships between our educators that we, we share together. And I think that that's really important, that this becomes a, a systematic solution in a lot of ways to help the, all the individual kids. And I think that that's what we're trying to do, is talk about all those factors. My, my reluctance to say this is exactly what we're doing is because I'm allowing the principals, like we always do, to plan placement. That's their role. And I think the role of a principal meets with their language arts coordinators at the elementary level especially, and spends weeks on this. And it's up to them to be a voice in this as well, and, and do some of this work.
Yeah, absolutely. And just from a board perspective, I just want to say, you know, I don't want you to be stuck in a box and feeling like everybody has to remain in their specific homeschool. If we can do something that's, that suits kids, and it meets the kids' needs, but also doesn't put extra stress on our staff and our teachers and extra responsibilities, that's great. And I'm so grateful, Bill, that you'll be there, not only for students and families, but for our staff members, because, you know, I know a lot of the Real teachers this year, they were exclusively remote, and that is a very different level of stress and responsibility than trying to teach concurrently. Not, not, you know, not saying that remote learning is ideal either, that's also very difficult, but trying to do both well at once is just a particularly tricky juggling act. So I'm grateful that you'll be there to support all those people in that population, which, you know, including the teachers, which is important to me. So thank you.
And which, we've got to remember, too, that we have a, a district staff that had to think outside the box during a pandemic. So when we move forward, they've already had this experience of, of newness and, and trying different things. And so I think, I think we'll see next year, I'm pretty excited about what people may try or be willing to do as a result of what we saw them do this year. I mean, across the board, you know, teachers in person, teachers remote, you know, everyone, you know, worked hard under, under stress, and, and so next year is an opportunity for people to catch their breath, but continue to be innovative.
Thank you.
Along the same vein, I think while we're on the topic, I was curious if we, you know, we surveyed parents, but did we do any surveys out to all of our educators and teachers about the success of concurrent learning, or the challenges, or what they need? I know sometimes we survey in the district and with parents, but I was just curious if any survey went to our teachers.
So we have tonight, well, it's on the, there was an agenda item tonight where we were going to talk about our plans for the future, and one of those included a survey to parents, which we must do, and staff as well. And so maybe later on tonight, we can just briefly describe that process.
So is the survey specifically about concurrent learning to our teachers? That was my question. Did we survey?
It's all of it, so, yeah.
Lori?
So I know I said this in the past, but I worked in a school district where teachers presented to the school board about concurrent learning and how the struggles that they have in the classroom doing concurrent learning, and that they're so divided that the education is divided. So as much as I like innovation, and I think that there are some real opportunities here, I would be really opposed to having teachers doing concurrent learning every day they don't know. And, you know, as a former teacher, it's so important for student engagement, and when you're trying to take care of this student here and try to take care of your classroom, it's impossible. And, and, you know, I've listened to so many teachers tell us how hard it is. Now, do I think that we can move forward and there's things that we can do? Like, I definitely think, you know, all the things, the outcomes on student offerings, like extended learning opportunities, you know, there are some online programs, we know that there's V-Lax, there is Play-Doh, there is opportunities that we can give students that they can have online courses, every course that you can imagine that they could have. We could, with some of the, the people that we're talking about, that's where, where Play-Doh is obviously a different platform than V-Lax, because it's unit-based, there's, you can actually tutor, you could actually have a teacher, you know, on Google Classroom with that student doing that work. So I think there's, where's, places that we can go. I would not support, myself as a board member, saying we're going to do concurrent learning all the way through next year.
Dr. McFuckman?
So I just want to, if I could comment on that, I would just take exception to your term "impossible" because it's not, because teachers made it possible this year. And I think we sometimes forget, we act as if we chose to do this just on our own. There was a pandemic, and it was, in fact, this board that insisted back in the winter that we seek to find alternative ways to provide live instruction to students, more than we did in the fall, and we did that. And I think it's a little bit of a disservice to suggest that it's impossible, because it wasn't. There's also, I think, been a strong emphasis on what didn't work. We have been, as a team, very focused on learning the lessons of what didn't work, but then leveraging those lessons to actually be very productive and forward-thinking, and we have been. So I, I wouldn't say that it's impossible. Having said that, is there a teacher in the district who thinks it was easy? No. But I also would say that this board frequently, almost always, asked us to consider the needs of students before anything else. That is a goal in this. There are thirty-nine students who have expressed that preference. So it wouldn't be across the board, the concurrent learning would be available to those thirty-nine students who requested it. So it wouldn't be across the board, and it wouldn't change daily. And we, as, as John just mentioned, it is going to be focused on, we're going to try to balance it off with class size, we're going to try to balance it off with professional development. Certainly, no teacher would say they prefer this. But we, we're challenged by the board to challenge our teachers to deliver, to, to work through the challenges that the pandemic brought, brought to us, to do the best that we could for students. And we have taken that lesson and are moving forward with it. So, you know, we can all probably agree to disagree on that, but I, I would say we've proved that it is not impossible. It's hard, and, and I would expect that the survey, when we put it out there, would absolutely tell us that, and also that they don't prefer it. I think that's probably true. Then the question is, is, has it, has it ever been our position that a preference, I mean, we spent a lot of time talking about we should focus on student needs. So we're focusing on student needs.
Right, and so, and so am I, thirty-eight hundred of them, so...
It's a lot, Lori, too, if I could, thank, please. I think it's, it's just about figuring out how to make it work, whether it's thirty-nine kids or thirty-eight hundred that want the, want, you know, whatever they, whatever, whatever they need, you know? And for these group of kids, it's remote learning. But, and then it's about working collaboratively with those people that would be willing to give something a try, you know? And, and I saw teachers at the high school that were working remotely, and they had students that were in the building, and they had students that were remote, and they were doing, one teacher, Nicole Roland, it was like watching Rachel Ray. She was doing a, a cooking demonstration, and her students in the building at home, and at home, but, but, but it was working because there was a willingness. And, and our, our district leadership team is so good about working and finding those, those people with a willingness to, to maybe be a little bit out of the comfort zone, but, but, but know they're going to get supported. And so I'm confident that, right now, we're saying it's, it's concurrent learning, but I'm comfortable that we're going to figure out a way that it's going to work for the student, the family, and, and the, the teacher.
You still have the floor, Lori?
So, so the Department of Education put out today, they're hoping kids will all go back to school in, in September. But they're also understanding that there, you know, we have learned some lessons, so there are going, going to be, you know, some, you know, trainings and some, you know, innovations. And I'm all for personalized learning. I, I understand there's thirty-nine students that, you know, want something different. I'm just saying, you know, if I was understanding this correctly, if I was a high school student, I would have my day schedule, and I would, if that teacher of all of those five classes would have to teach me concurrently at the same time they're teaching their class. And what I'm saying is, I don't think that's the most effective way to deliver instruction.
Thank you. And it's, and, and I, I saw today the governor, I don't think, my apologies, the, the Commissioner of Ed had actually put out an invitation for educators to take training on virtual learning. And so we have, you know, it's like, we all want kids back in school, but I think it's realistic to think, you know, that let, let's provide the tools we didn't have the opportunity to do last year. And, and, and I, you know, I think we're, we all want to learn, take, take the best lessons we've learned, you know, in this crisis, and have us, you know, make learning the best for kids.
Shannon?
And I know it doesn't directly relate, what I was going to say, it does not directly relate to the Real Academy's vision, but when I look at what we have dealt with before, you know, pre-pandemic, where we have the technology to overcome some of the other challenges, and another one I was, as we were just talking about, I was really thinking about, where, was kids that come to school sick, because I have a test coming up, they have, they don't want to fall behind, that, you know, they would be able to stay home, not miss a beat. You know, I mean, of course, if you're really sick, you know, there's a different story for that. I mean, that's when catch-up happens, but there's so much more exception to that, that if a student needs to stay home because, say they're running a temp or they have a cold, or, you know, whatever the case may be, they can now not miss a beat in their classroom, because concurrent learning can be available. And I think that there's so much since the technology is in place and invested in that we can do with it. And it may not be Real Academy, so I feel like I'm hijacking your presentation, I'm really sorry, Bill. But, you know, I think that there's so much that this technology is going to allow us to do long-term. This is, you know, Real Academy is one part of many ways. And again, I think it's going to help attendance if we can do that kind of thing, because we're not going to have kids bringing it in and sharing with others. You know, we're not going to be wearing masks most likely come September, so when they do come in with their cold, we're back to the way it was. You know, when flu season hits, we're back to the way it was. So the more we can do to avoid those kind of things, I think we're in better shape to give them a workaround where the kids don't feel that they're going to be doing makeup work for the day that they missed, the days, the day, the day, two days they missed. So I think there's a lot of upside to this, that concurrent learning is always an option, and that they can, they can not even have to plan for it, it's just there for them when they need it, because we'll have the devices to support it.
Lori Peters?
So let me kind of piggyback on both what Lori and Shannon said. I've been a teacher who's done concurrent learning since August. It is exhausting. The national data that is coming in preliminary is that teachers will do it, they give a hundred percent, they are willing to do it, but they are exhausted and burning out and quitting. So having students who are absent today and back in school tomorrow, yes, I agree, doing concurrent's great, except that you can't prepare for that. You can't prepare your engagement tools for that, you can't prepare your off-site lessons for that. Almost the better thing to do for that situation is for the class to be recorded, the teacher to be recorded, and the student, you put it in an ed puzzle, and that's how they kept, stay on top of their classwork. Rather than being in on the classroom, especially if they don't feel good, they don't want to be online and sitting in front of their computer. I agree with Jenna, if, if we move forward for this year, especially because vaccines have not been released for children under twelve yet, and I recognize that there are medically fragile people, then we need to cluster as many students as possible. Because, and I agree, we need willing teachers who know what they're taking on. But I do think we should do a clearly anonymous survey on this because of what's coming in in the national data. I would also add, Wall Street Journal had a very lengthy article on the extensive and huge amount of cheating going on with remote learning. And our teachers do their very, very best to try and not prevent that. And I'm not accusing any particular Merrimack student at all. But it is a constant temptation. And so the concurrent learning model has to take that into account and, you know, ways to support teachers in that aspect as well. And those are kind of unique thing, I mean, cheating's not unique. But the breadth of it since remote learning was instituted last spring has become much, much worse than we have seen nationwide.
Dr. McLaughlin?
So I would just, um, so this is a conversation for, for this, obviously for this board to have. I would just tell you, as I, uh, look to wind down, this team, this is a team, a leadership team and a teaching staff that is and has been for fifteen, sixteen, seventeen months in a problem-solving mode. They can solve any problem that's been presented, that's presented to them. So we're talking a lot about the obstacles to some of these things and they're real and I acknowledge them. But we have not spent the last seventeen months, uh, saying, we can't, we can't, we can't. We've been spending the last seventeen months saying, we can, we're going to do it, we're going to try. And we have proven to be quite successful, as have many districts. Unsuccessful in other areas, like many districts. But I would also say, I understand the data, if you ask me, I'm exhausted too. This wouldn't be the best time for me to tell you all how I feel about this last, you know, fifteen, sixteen, eighteen months myself. But the fact is that when it's over and when teachers can learn to be innovative without a crisis, a daily crisis, without having to have meetings to talk about whether we have to go into quarantine a classroom or a school, um, that changes the dynamic. The exhaustion that some of these national surveys are recording is a leftover from trauma. We've talked a lot about trauma, uh, in this district with Cassie Yakley. The last eighteen months have been a trauma for everybody. Not the most ripe time to, uh, generate data that asks about moving forward. So, uh, we are planning to survey, that was how this petition, uh, particular part got started. But I would just say that, um, we have to bear in mind the timing of all that. And all that we're trying to do is contribute to the conversation. Two Revolutions was just adopted on the premise that it's going to, you know, be supportive of innovation and innovative practices. Well, that's what we've been about, we support that, good luck. And we continue to offer the idea, uh, that there are some ways that we can be problem solvers. And so this is, this is what we're presenting and we're more than happy, the district would be more than happy to, to work with the board. And if it isn't their, uh, preference to do it, well, that's the, you know, that's the prerogative. But I mean, that's, that's been the goal all along, is trying to problem solve. That's all we've done.
Any other comments?
Um, I have to say, from a student point of view, I think it would be amazing to have this next year available, especially for sick days. Because it makes kids very stressed to be behind in their classes. And that's always been an issue of mine personally, especially with, like, if you have a project going on or something like that. So it's a very good option that all students can benefit from.
Thank you, Caitlin.
Thanks, Caitlin. All right, I think we're all set.
Thank you. So, um, so the eyes are still smiling and it's great to see all of you, um, in person. And, uh, and if I don't see you before the end of the year, have, have a very good summer.
Thank you, too, Bill. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay. Uh, next up is item number six, history of Depot Street property and requests for lease, the Merrimack Historical Society, and Chuck Moore. And once he winds down and you come up, um, there's a couple of microphones, so feel free to grab whichever one you're most comfortable with. Or one at each one, whatever you prefer. And welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, my name is John Lustoka and I'm the president of the Merrimack Historical Society. So, um, tonight Chuck and I have a little presentation, um, about the history of Schoolhouse Number Three, which you know is the, uh, PTA kindergarten. So, um, Chuck, do you want to introduce yourself or you want to leave?
I'd be glad to introduce myself, I think most of you know me, but the people at home may not. I'm Chuck Moore, I am the, uh, the town historian by virtue of the Heritage Commission. And, uh, I have been working with the president of the historical society to advance the best interests of the community. And this particular project is one that I am very intimately aware of. So John, please continue.
Welcome.
Thank you, Chuck. Again, John Lustoka, 183 Amos Road, right here in Merrimack. So, the, the reason, um, I'm really here is because the historical society needs a home. We have a home and it's at 520 Boston Post Road in Merrimack. That home was built in eighteen forty-seven. And, um, uh, it, it's, uh, it's challenging to do our work there. So the slide that I have up there is, um, is kind of appropriate seeing I'm in front of the school board, why not, why not show the first high school in Merrimack? It's, um, it was the Maga Normal Institute, it was a teacher's college back in its day. And, um, it was built in eighteen forty-nine and it was razed or torn down in nineteen fifty. Chuck can talk to the history of that, it's, uh, he's quite knowledgeable. So, so, so my charge here tonight is, is to have you folks, can you hear me okay? To have you folks have an understanding of, of our need, the historical society's need. And, um, the last year and a half with COVID has been challenging for us, just like it has for everyone in this room. It just, we had to rethink everything. I'm, I'm new on the scene, um, I was, uh, I've been a vice president here at the society for two years. Our president had some health issues, I filled in. And then January first, um, he's, he stepped back to vice president and I took over the president's job. So I took a hard look at the, at the school, our facilities, our, just everything that the society does. And, and we come up with recommendations as that we, we need a new facility. I'm going to, um, here is our home. It's, um, that's the one-room schoolhouse, it's Schoolhouse Number Twelve. The, in, in fact, one of the things the historical society did for the Merrimack's two-seventy-fifth is we, we are doing a, a photo gallery every month. And we hang them up here in the hallway as you come up the stairs into this meeting room and in the town hall and at the library and hopefully in the schools. It's, if the two-seventy-fifth wants that. I think it's really important for children to, to experience history, especially the, the town. So, so we did that and, um, our, our first gallery was of the one-room schoolhouses here in Merrimack. And, um, and the Maga, um, location was, is, is where the, um, Schoolhouse Three is. So our schoolhouse is, um, it's on a small lot that was given to us by a farmer years and years ago. It sits on an outcropping of ledge. There was no foundation under it. The, the school itself sits on granite foundations, uh, but that also sits right on ledge. The, the, the office that's attached to the right of it was built in the nineteen forties and I think they moved two small outbuildings from, uh, from local farmers or whoever gave it to them and they, and they, and back then they, they made it a kitchen. And the ladies had different, uh, gatherings, you know, for, uh, events and fed the people and made some money and, and the, um, and the historical society was, was born. So the, um, as you're looking at it, on the right-hand side of the photo, you see a replica of a, of an old well that was prominent here with all the homes in town. To the left of the well is an outhouse. Uh, that's, it's, uh, it's really a shed where we, um, store some of our, our equipment for maintaining the property. And to the left of that is, is our office. It's not big, there's only room for one desk. It's, um, challenging, to say the least, the technology. Everything is done on a three-by-five library card and there's nothing wrong with that, it works great. My fear, and it's a big fear, is that if we have a fire or something happens to those cards, we have, we have two duplicate sets that we have, but nothing is digitized. Now, um, my, my background is technology. I, I retired from Verizon and, um, I'm very familiar with large data systems and networks. And, um, when I, when I see this, this schoolhouse, it's, we're really technology-wise in eighteen forty-seven. It's got a phone, it's got, it's got a dial-up and you, you can't do a Zoom meeting from there. There is no room to have meetings, it's, it's extremely small. And, um, what, what I'm proposing to do is, um, and it's already started, is to get new software, new computers and a high-speed internet that we can function with technology-wise. Here in the time of COVID, everything has changed in how we do business today, everything. And, and, um, and I think it's, the time has come for us to step up and do this. So I filed for several grants. Now, I'm giving you an explanation of who we are because it's important for what I'm going to ask you after. The, there is museum-quality software that's an industry standard and it's called PassPerfect. It's tiered for any, any size organization. And I've, I've reached out to the New Hampshire Historical Society, the New Hampshire State Library, ten or twelve different small historical societies like us, larger ones like us, museums, they all use PassPerfect. I wrote two grants, I received one grant a couple of weeks ago that's going to allow us to purchase PassPerfect. We have two volunteers that are stepping up that have found out that we are going to do this. One is a librarian from Riviera College and, and another one, and these are people that live in town, they're local. And another one, uh, has worked as a, for the National Historical Society. They are advanced. These large cities, even small towns are advanced. And, and we need to make this happen for Merrimack. And I've already told you about PassPerfect, I just want to explain what it does. I'm only going to give you one, one explanation. Uh, PassPerfect keeps track of all of our sessions. If someone gave me this mouse, we'd put it in who, who it came from, what it was, the manufacturer, everything we can find out about this mouse is going to come in as an accession and its value or no value. And, and the person who gave it to us. So we have, that's, that's what PassPerfect does, that's what museums are for. The part that excites me is, is that if we receive the photo of, a photo of the library here in town and out in front of the library is a fifty-five red and white Chevy convertible. And John Doe, the police chief, and Peter Smith, the librarian, is standing in front of that, that car. That information would be put into PassPerfect. And it'd be John Smith, John Doe, the convertible, the library, the date, who we get the photo from, it'll all be digit, digitized in PassPerfect. This software can be searched from a computer tied to our network. So if someone wants to look up Town of Merrimack Library, this, this photo will appear. If someone's looking at, up for John Doe, the police chief, this photo will appear. And, and as we get more and more data, excuse me, more and more data in, into this, it will be a huge research database for this, for this town. And it can be shared with the schools, the libraries. It, it's, you know, someone said to me, every time you see an obituary in the paper, we've lost one library. So our group is aging, they have all this kinds of information to share. We need to save it as soon as possible. So that's, that's really, excuse me, that's, that's really the, the crux of this, this software. So it's new and I know it, some of the people think it's kind of challenging to, to do a change. So. our society is a 501(c)(3). We're a nonprofit. We're all volunteers. There is so much expertise in our, our membership and they all chip in. So I told you, my charge is to get a new home so we can do this stuff. We, we have a lot of sessions we can't display. We'd like to have a museum set up. Just take a trip to any other town around here that has a home, has a building that was donated to them, have a trust that was donated to them so they can function. We don't have that. No one's giving us anything other than that schoolhouse. That's what we own. And there's room for one desk. We're so challenged for space to do, to do presentations or galleries. We, we, we have no room. So let's see. So in, we were founded in, in, in 1970. And I'm going to mention a name, Vesta Senta, who was very active in the town back, back in, in the eighties and nineties. She, she tried to put that schoolhouse on the Historic New Hampshire Register. It qualifies. The only problem is that the report that was given, given to her from the New Hampshire Historical Socii, um, New Hampshire Historic Society, right, said that the, the building itself was in good repair and it was valid to put on Historic Register. We don't have many of these buildings in town on a Historic Register. What had to be done is the addition to the back, those two buildings that are now our office need to be removed. And then a small few repairs to a door. Then we can apply for, for that building to be on Historic Register. Once that's done, we can file for grants. Then we can, we can move ahead with money. We can't do anything without funding. And so that's, 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 let me see. I just want to make sure I didn't forget anything. So my last note is what Historical Societies are for is, is their education. And when I stepped in, I asked if, if the Historical Society has done anything with the schools in town. And I think there has been. I, I'm, I'm not sure about it, but we sure are willing to step up, do presentations, just generate interest. And this is our 275th celebration. So it's challenging during COVID. We can't have one-on-one things, but one of our charges, like I said, is doing the galleries in here and, and a few others. So we need a home and we're interested in leasing or renting schoolhouse number three or the kindergarten, the PTA kindergarten building. So, so for a little bit of local history and, oh, my family has been, been in Merrimack since the early 1900s. And I, I live in town on the family farm. So just a little bit of history about me. So I'm going to, I'm going to turn this over, over to Chuck.
Thank you, John. I will try to be very brief, roll this right along because you've got a general idea of what, what we are here to ask. I will tell you that I am very excited. John and I have been working together now for several months. He's an amazing individual. He's a high-tech man. And we believe that we can bring the Historical Society into the 21st century with new initiatives and new opportunities. And particularly if this is available, we can form a partnership with the school district that will allow us to have access to information, allow the school district to have access to information, opportunities for students, for extended learning, all kinds of programs and so forth. We really believe that in concert with the school district, we can be much more than what we have been in the past and we can attract new people as a result of that. The schoolhouse on Boston Post Road is old. It is terribly inadequate and there's, there's only so much you can do. So yes, we are looking for a home. I happen to be very familiar with this home. Here it is on Route 3. What was the date on this?
1951.
Yeah.
Oh, that one.
Oh, 1951 is when the building was moved from its original location, which was about where the Hot Rise Bagel Shop is. And
1849.
1849. Thank you, John. Next slide.
Sorry, Chuck.
So here it comes. They roll it off the foundation because they tore down the Maga Normal Institute. And they found there was a little covenant problem and they had to do something about it. And so they pulled this school down and placed it on the original site of the Maga and then sold the land where this school had been sitting up by, about where the Hot Rise Bagel Shop is. Next slide. Oh, this is a good slide because the, the locus here is we've got an, an Oldsmobile that everybody would love to drive, I'm sure. And right behind the Oldsmobile is a little shack. And that little shack is Axel's Ice Cream.
That's awesome.
And Bedford Road doesn't even exist yet here because this is pre-1954 Turnpike. And so here's our number three school coming down Daniel Webster Highway. The little white building on the right is where Walgreens is now. Next slide. Oh, he's taking a wide right turn now to swing the school building onto Fred Smith's Field. Oh my goodness, what an enterprise. Next slide. Here it is, coming across the field. They've got some dollies in the back and they're throwing planks under the dollies because the, the land is soft there in the field. They got a bulldozer and a lovely old tractor pulling across the back of Fred Smith's Field. And here it is. It's almost there. And you can see on the left, behind the bulldozer, is my barn.
That's right.
Next slide. Oh, it finally arrives at Ten Depot Street. They've, they've poured the floor down here or prepared the floor. They're about ready to pour a foundation and then move the number three onto it. And here it is, home at last. Third and fourth grade. I went to third grade there. And, and then as obviously the town developed and grew, there was less need for the building and it served a couple of different functions until the PTA kindergarten came along and said, well, you know, we don't have a kindergarten program in town. We want to start a kindergarten. And boy, did they provide a service for the community. Oh my gosh, I don't know how many kids in town went to the PTA kindergarten. But as time would have it, we've all worked for education. We've made education happen in Merrimack and in New Hampshire. And we now have public kindergarten. And we've been a victim of our own success. And the PTA kindergarten can no longer attract the kind of sustaining clientele that it once did. And they have chosen to abandon the contract with the school district. So we are here to appeal to your interest in entering into some kind of negotiation for us to occupy the building. We have another slide here, John? This one's an interesting one. Contractor was John Lester. Not this John Listoka, but his father, in fact, actually moved the number three school down onto the old Maga site.
Which, which one? Which one is he?
He says second from the right.
Yeah, my, my dad is second from the right. He's kind of got his foot up on the, on the beam with his, with his hands resting on his knee. Yeah, that's John Lester, the building mover. But his real name is Listoka. And I went to school, and this is a funny story because it's got something to do with my diploma. So you might get a chuckle out of this. Because I went to school as John Lester. My cousin Joe Lester, Bill Lester, Mary Lester, schoolteacher, Joanne Lester, a schoolteacher here in town. That's my cousin.
Your cousin, yeah.
All, all were Lesters. And when I graduated, I graduated from Alveron. I'm, and, and when I did, I got my diploma. I didn't even look at it. I just took it, sat down, did my thing, got home and I opens it up and it says, John Listoka Jr. And I'm going, man, I got, I got the wrong, wrong diploma, somebody else's. She goes, no, that's your real name. And, and that's a true story. So, so when I, when I went to apply, you know, to sign up for the, for the, to the selective service, I had a choice of go by an alias that was given my grandfather when he came through Ellis Island. They said, you're not going to sell any meat or poultry or farm products. Go by Lester. It'll be easier for you. So I decided, I kind of liked the name. So everyone in the family kept Listoka. So there's only a few of us around, but it's a
Well, that's, that's a great story.
I do.
I, I have one question for, for Chuck. Is that you on the left-hand side with the fancy fedora on? It's only joking.
I was driving the bulldozer.
You were driving the bulldozer? I, I just want to, I just want to thank you for, for making this one of the, the most pleasurable board meetings I've been to in a heck of a long time. I, I absolutely love this stuff, the historical value of everything and looking at these old photographs.
Well, I, I remember all of this exceptionally well. I was three years old and it was a very big deal to see something like that happen in your backyard.
You darn right it was.
And of course, my father had been in love with the Maga Normal Institute and had never sanctioned it being torn down. And what was, what did he make us do as kids? Well, we had to get on and pick up all the old square cut nails down there and save them.
Ah, yeah.
So this was, this was my, my initiation here in Reed's Ferry and I, I remember it like it was yesterday.
Thank you.
When, when Chuck and I were talking about this, I thought, you know what? This is just a perfect topic for tonight, you know, for a variety of reasons. You know, I think we're never too old to get a history lesson. And that PTA building is very beloved in this town. And with it kind of winding down right now and with the graduation right around the corner, I thought this was just the perfect night for a presentation like this so that the community could find out more too. You know, I'm sure many people don't know that that used to be, that building was at Hot Rise and got moved, you know, before Bedford Road was even there. I just, it's just
It was a terrible thing to have lost many of the buildings that we have had in Merrimack and certainly our first high school. But for every opportunity that we miss, another opportunity arises at some point in the future. And I, I have seen that happen more often than you know. I just didn't think that it would take 70 years for this opportunity to come back around. But I am very pleased to sit here and tell you that I think that the communion between the school district and the Historical Society in the occupation of this building can be something very special.
Yeah, when, when these photos were taken, I had never seen these before until I was spending some time with Chuck and he goes, I got some photos of a school that your dad moved. My father took them. So Chuck's father took these photos. When these were taken, I was eight years old. I didn't, I have no recollection of anything about that. But isn't it ironic
What a story.
That 70 years later, the building my father moved, I'm in front of you guys asking you a favor for that school.
So just a little bit about that. What we were, we weren't going to take a vote on that tonight per se, but what we'll do is we'll have you work through, you know, Matt, our assistant superintendent of business and, and work through your request that way. But wanted you to be able to come and formally make that request, put it on record and, you know, really hope that something might, might be a good fit.
And I was just going to
We, we look forward to working with Superintendent Chevonnell to come up with an agreeable position between the board and the Historical Society.
I'm just really excited about this because, like I said, I, I just love going back into the history. And my wife is a long, had been, you know, grew up in the town and she can point out various buildings where this is where I used to play as a little girl, but now the building is gone. It was an old Victorian place with a stairwell and now Shaw's is there. You know, so there's a lot of things like that. And to lose the imagery of this would be awful, awful.
John?
Thank you.
And from, and gentlemen, thank you. That was great. I'm also the husband of a, a history teacher and a, and a brother of one. So I, I love looking at these and I grew up in a city myself and I was very involved in the, the history and worked at the Heritage State Park as a college student for years. So I, I enjoy that walk. It was just so great to see, you know, where Hot Rise was and just see that road. It just blew my mind really to watch that. So thank you. And I look for the opportunity in the future, if this does, you know, come, come to fold, that we talk about the academic side of the ledger where I, where, where Matt's the business side on the, on his right hand a lot and the academic side. And I'd love to see more partnerships, especially with something that, that's, you know, part of the district and part of where we are. I'd love to see the kids have some opportunities there for showcases and things like that. So I'm, I look forward to the future of that. That's an amazing endeavor that I think we could, we could join together in. So thank you.
Mark?
Yeah, and just, just to tag on that. So I, I agree with you both about the number of opportunities that could be realized moving forward between the Historical Society and the district. I will say that every time that teachers have sought support from the Historical Society for any particular endeavor that they've been involved in, they've been, you know, really warmly supported and, and it's, and it's really made a difference in their efforts to provide some context for some of the standards around the new, the, the state and national standards around social studies, particularly community standards. And in those cases, folks have been very helpful. So I can only imagine what the future holds. So on behalf of all of them over those years, thank you.
So thank you for coming. I do want to point out, I think it's very interesting that John and Chuck didn't even know each other until the 275th committee started. And now they're like best friends and doing all kinds of work together. So that's amazing. So it's sad about the PTA kindergarten. My children went there. It was a wonderful school, but I really do think this is a brilliant opportunity for the town of Merrimack. And then one other interesting point you brought up, Vesta Senta, who was a school board member for many, many years. So I, I think it's very interesting that she had such a passion for the Historical Society and that one schoolhouse. And all these years later, like probably 30, right, since she was in town, here we are talking again.
Now, this, this picture gives me chills right here.
Our last slide here is the Our last slide here is the building that replaced the Maga Normal Institute, the 1953 New High School, which is which is now even yet only a small portion of the upper elementary school.
You can see the section facing Babusick Lake Road where the the entryway is, which is now encased in the chain link fence where the playground is.
That's crazy.
That's unbelievable.
In one man's.
No, yeah, let's just.
In one man's lifetime.
Forget about everything else. Let's just chat, huh?
Well, thank you very much. If you have no other comments, thank you very much for entertaining us this evening.
More a matter of process for this side. To go into negotiations on things like real estate leases, we would have to have non-public so we could discuss terms and conditions, correct?
Yeah.
Because honestly, we don't even have this building vacated. Is that also accurate? Correct. So I know that I'm just going to kind of put it out there for tonight. We had the opportunity, if we don't do this, to have a facility that we could use for our students as well. I mean, it's it's built for students. And my biggest concern, and we've had this superstorm Sandy, is that we don't have appropriate student services facilities. When we had the flood, we lost all the therapy space downstairs, all of it gone, unusable and unsafe. So cut off. So if we actually lease this facility to a third party, we've now tied our hands further on what we can do. Right now, our student services building also doesn't have ADA compliance, and it's for those who have ADA needs. So there's a lot that I was thinking about when I first heard, not from, just through the grapevine, that Merrimack PTA was closing. It's about direct student services that are not being met. So, I mean, this is a this is a left hook. I didn't know this was coming until we got our agendas. So I didn't even know this was up for discussion or even being entertained. But those were my initial thoughts, and I thought we would have an agenda item about the district's needs and the opportunity that that building would present the district in its operations. So with that, and Chuck, you've been on the budget committee long enough to know, we have not gotten a yes for student services slash administrative building. And until we do, we are going to be between a rock and a hard place for that. And I think you've seen the pictures, if you haven't been in the facilities themselves, that blue house on our main campus where the high school is. And that's literally where everything has to get done, and it's not being done up to up to standards. And we've acknowledged that for a very long time. So that was my initial thought when this this building presented itself. So I just want to let you know where my head was before this came out of out of kind of left field and onto our agenda. So I just want to let you know what my thoughts are. And again, it's putting kids first. But I do, you know, we are Historic Society supporters. My husband's a member for many years. I think he helped with the scanning initiative that started when our kids were very little, so almost 20 years ago. And we have obviously a historically significant, not registered, because I got the limits you talked about, we won't do that, home in town as well from the 1700s. So we understand the value of what your organization brings, at least I do personally. And thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Have a nice evening. Thanks for coming. All right, next item is number seven, which is annual review of general assurances. Mark McLaughlin.
So in your packet, you all received a copy of the general assurances for fiscal year 2022. And for the purposes of folks at home, I'll just read the first paragraph. This is an annual thing at this time of year that we are required to do. So general assurances, requirements, and definitions for participation in federal programs. Subrecipients of any federal grant funds provided through the New Hampshire Department of Education must submit a signed copy of this document to the New Hampshire Department of Education Bureau of Federal Compliance prior to any formula grant application being deemed to be, quote, substantially approvable, or any discretionary grant receiving final approval. Once a formula grant is deemed to be in substantially approvable form, the subrecipient may begin to obligate funds, which will be reimbursed upon final approval of the application by the NHDOE 34 CFR 708. So this is really a pro forma thing. We do it every year. And what it requires is the superintendent and the school board chair to initial each page. We are also required to provide minutes of this meeting that proves that the board had a chance to review this. Those, in addition to the initial pages, would be sent to the state, and that would therefore allow us to continue to be a subrecipient for any federal grant provided by the NHDOE or other entities. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to address them. It's, as I said, it's pretty pro forma, so.
Any questions?
I have one question.
Lori Bethas.
So Matt, do you oversee all the grants? Like, who oversees all the grants at Central Office?
Well, as far as the the bookkeeping and the accounting, that would be me.
Okay.
Yes.
I just know a lot of districts have like a grant manager on top of everything else.
Well, we have a part-time federal funds bookkeeper, but she works for me for a number of hours a week, and but I'm the overseer of all the grants.
Okay.
I go through the single audit, and then I bite my nails for two weeks, so.
I get that.
That qualifies.
I understand.
Do we need any kind of a motion for this?
You just would, not really, but you could just say there could be a motion to accept the general assurances and give the chair and the superintendent the authority to sign. If you didn't choose to do that, that'd be fine, too, but you could.
Okay, so I make a motion to accept the general assurances and give the ability for the chair and the superintendent of schools to sign.
Do I have a second? Made by Shannon. Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. 500.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is the item number eight, update on Honeywell ventilation project. Matt Chevonnell?
Thank you very much. You recall that second Tuesday in April, we passed a lease purchase for $4 million to provide ventilation in all of our five schools, because the middle school already is up to code. During that discussion, we had a deliberative session, and I think it was probably in the voters guide, we had estimated that we would have around 56 unit ventilators put into the buildings across the board. Well, we've been in negotiations with Honeywell for the past six weeks, seven weeks, eight weeks, and we have executed the contract. The amount of interest that we had estimated to be on the the lease purchase was around 1.77. We went out to bid. We've got three bids that were in the twos, and we've got one bid that was 1.55. So we actually came in better than what we had estimated as far as the the interest rate on the lease purchase. We also had the opportunity to upgrade the number of unit ventilators that we'll be putting into classrooms from 56 units to 61. And that is still within cost, within budget. It's around $7,000 below below budget. What we're going to be doing is the the place that we want to address first, based upon CO2 level, is the E section in the high school on the second second floor. When COVID first hit because of the high CO2 levels, we actually closed that section. So that's the primary focus of the summer work. There's probably around 10 to 12 units. They have to soft cut in the walls, install them in the in the exterior walls. And, you know, it's getting getting the equipment. Everything's on order, but it's going to be dict, how fast we can go is going to be dictated by how quickly we can get the unit ventilators, and then how quickly we can do the install. And then they all have to be hooked up to the Honeywell Building Management System. They're just not standalone units. They're all controlled centrally. So the the plan right now is to get that E section of high school taken care of first, and then we'll do the remaining units more than likely in the evening on second shift, during vacations, sometimes on weekends. It's kind of like years ago when we had the Honeywell Energy Efficiency Audit, and we also looked at CO2 at J Mews. And we did those over the course of the year. There were 27 of them. So that's basically the plan. So the financing went well, contract negotiations went well. It was all approved by legal, and everything is ready to go. And our first priority is the E section in high school, in the high school, and we'll take care of everything else over the course of the year. It's a huge project to do. It would have been nice to do it this summer, but you would need a massive crew the size of, I don't know, like the National Guard or something to do it. So it's just not, it's just not feasible. We'll get we'll get it done before the end of the school year, I'm sure. We may bleed into a little bit in the summertime, but that's okay, too. So that's my update.
Questions? Okay. Moving on to number nine, resumption of before and after school programming for fall 2021. Dr. McLaughlin?
So just happy to tell the board that we have been looking into all kinds of ways that, you know, normal can happen. And one of the most significant ones is contemplating the resumption of before and after school programming. And so we have already contracted with the Adult Learning Center and entered, re-entered into our agreement. We have always been good partners with them and they with us. So we've signed that agreement. That's going to take place in the fall. In addition to that, all of our other before and after school partners as well, we are going to, we're in the process of communicating. It's important that we did it now, because families are beginning to register for the fall and so on and so forth, and we wanted to be sure that they understood that they could. So we've worked with the leadership team. They understand some of the special requirements that may need to be in place in the fall, depending on how things go. And they'll work with those entities as they always do to make sure that it's safe and in compliance with whatever the reality is at the time. But I think it's good news for a return to normal, and we look forward to resuming work with our partners, who've always been great, great to work with and have provided super service to our students and families. So anyway.
That's great news. They have been a great partner. I know that our families really appreciate the service. Any questions from anyone on the board? Any comments? Jenna?
My comment is just, thank you so much for ironing that out now and giving parents just so much runway to know what's coming in the fall, at least on that front, one one box checked for them. Huge, huge improvement, you know, towards normal, and so thank you very much for that.
Great.
Okay, next item on the agenda is number 10, which is the proposed summer school board meeting dates. I was going to just throw out a couple of dates and check availability. Shannon?
I was just thinking, in the state of flux that we're in, we're going to be looking at an interim superintendent. We're going to be looking at these two revolutions. I would suggest, I know we normally meet once a month, but maybe we should just go with the first and third Monday of each month and not deviate from that so that we can move forward a lot of the initiatives that we're getting off the ground right now.
Well, the first Monday is really a holiday because it's the day.
Right, well, we've done Tuesdays after a holiday before, like Martin Luther King Day, et cetera.
We could do.
The 12th.
I think the 12th is a possibility. And give ourselves that week of, I mean, there may be, I mean, particularly if we have a new, an interim at that time, we may need some time, you know, they they may need some time before they, you know, prep and. Or we could do the 6th. We could do July 6th, or we could do July 12th.
Do both.
Well, if you have, if you do the 12th, you could do the 12th and the 26th. There's still two Mondays in July.
You could do 12, yeah, you could do 12th and 26th, too. And you could leave 6 as needed, if you need an emergency board meeting.
I wouldn't be opposed to that. I would just ask if, you know, because obviously we would want this room so that we are also not putting a hardship on our community TV during summer hours in our facilities, as we would have to have them off campus here if we couldn't be necessarily in the building.
Can you check on those dates? We don't have to make a motion.
I'll have to make a motion, Chuck.
Yes, so the dates would be the 6th, potentially 12th and 26th.
Correct, in July, yeah.
Yeah.
And with with a focus on it being the 12th and the 26th, but the 6th is a possibility if we need it.
Right, yep.
And then for August?
Well, you could keep on that schedule during the 9th and the 23rd.
I think that sounds good. Everyone okay with that? Okay, good. That was easy enough. And then we'll just confirm. And there's, there is one other aspect, too. I know in the, you know, in the past year, we've had the ability to do not, we've had the ability to do like Zoom meetings. I think that's going to change with when the governor lifts his order, so.
I don't think we have the flexibility to
To do that.
do the emergency meetings at will, which is why I also made that recommendation.
All right, thank you. So next up is item number 11, requests to hire at will. Dr. McLaughlin?
So again, a very formal formality. And it's just that it might be less meaningful now, given what the board just decided, but typically in years when in the summer, July and August, there's only one board meeting a month. Granting the administration to hire at will means that we can extend an offer and not wait until the next board meeting, which might be, you know, a month or even more, in which case we could substant, you know, run the risk of losing qualified candidates to other places. And so the request to hire at will is pretty formality, but we need the board's approval to allow the district to do that. It may, as I say, be a little less of a of an issue now, since you're going to be meeting a little bit more, but nevertheless, I would still request that you authorize that just in case something happens and you don't meet as you're anticipating.
So for the month of July and August, that would be?
That's July and August, yes.
Shannon?
So I still think it's important, because I think you're talking about a short runway between hire and start date. So having that flexibility, I think you might lose candidates that would wait for our meetings. So I still think it's as imperative, even if we meet twice a month.
Perfect.
So if you wouldn't mind me entertaining a motion, I'd like to make the motion that we authorize the superintendent's office to hire at will for the months of July and August.
Do I have a second? Made by Jenna. Anyone want to speak to that motion?
I just really, again, we have a very dynamic hiring environment, I think, especially coming out of COVID and going into a normal school year. There's going to be a lot of movers and shakers out there. And we just need to give Merrimack the best chance to get the candidates they want.
Any other comments? All those in, oh, John, sorry.
Since I said on the back end of the hiring, I do all the interviews of the candidates and the professional staff organization that come in, I would, I appreciate that very much, because as you'll see tonight, I already have, we already have seven completed for this year. We have another six on the docket for this week that we're interviewing, Melissa and I, together. It is a nice specialty. We are, I'd say we're about 80% now that have accepted our offer, but I think we're 20 that haven't. So it's a pretty quick market right now, and everyone is hiring. So if we could have that, that would be much appreciated. Thank you.
We did our vote, right? We just did. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None. That's 500. Next on the agenda is the approval of May 10, 2021, non-public minutes, and May 13, 2021, non-public minutes, and the approval of the May 17, 2021, school board minutes. Do I have a motion? I was just going to do them in a block. Made by Shannon. A second by Jenna. Any updates? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? None. That's 500. Next up is the consent agenda. John Purvisio?
Thank you very much. We have three resignations tonight and then five new nominations. Amy Dees, resignation, Amy Dees, first grade teacher at Thornton's Ferry Elementary School. Tammy O'Connor, special education teacher at Merrimack High School. And Douglas Benema, school counselor at Thornton's Ferry Elementary School. Nominations. Claire Ellen Conrad, arch teacher, MES. Kristen Robachuk, health phys ed teacher at Merrimack High School. Andrea Hatch, first grade teacher, MES. Allison Romero, fourth grade teacher at Reed's Ferry Elementary School. And Caitlin Susie, special education teacher, Thornton's Ferry Elementary School.
Do I have a motion? Made by Jenna, second by Shannon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's 500. Next up, we've moved to other, number 14, any correspondence? Come to the board. Shannon?
I think we all got one with feedback for a moving update for Master Col, Upper Elementary School. And I believe that the principal, McGill, had already reached back out to the parent. So I hope that came to resolution.
Great. Any other correspondents? I received a couple, which were around just the topic of graduation. It seems that many of those concerns have been resolved as it relates to folks being able to attend the ceremony. And then I also received a couple of emails in support of real learning and I received an email against concurrent learning. Comments? Shannon?
Tonight was an example of something that I've noticed in a couple of our recent meetings. And historically, we've had people that are out of district, non-employees, non-present, presenting first so they can, you know, not listen to necessarily all of our business of the night. So with the historic society request, that was number six. And we had, you know, Bill and John present and then we talked about two revolutions even before that. So I would just say if we could resume the practice of having guests of the district come and present in our agendas earlier so that way they can get home at a more reasonable hour.
I agree completely. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, moving on to new business, I just have a couple of items. One is just an update on the interim superintendent. The board will be interviewing six candidates this week on Wednesday. Two internal candidates, four from outside the district. The idea is that we will narrow down to two finalists that we will interview next week. And then the goal is to get an interim in place as soon as we can, as the best candidate as soon as we possibly can. And preferably before July 1st, but we realize that timeline is short. If we can't by July 1st, which is very critical because there's many important things that need to happen in the district as far as signatures and some other things, then we may need to appoint, you know, an, an acting superintendent for those purposes. Once, once we get through that process, then the next step is to begin our work with two revolutions and administration and move towards a process of very inclusive with our staff and the community regarding the vision. And from there, the idea is to align a, also a very community, multi-stakeholder process to a search committee that would select a superintendent through a very, a process that we'll be able to tell more about in the future. But I just wanted to be able to give an update so people understand, you know, what's coming down the pipe. Once, you know, first is, you know, we need to move quickly to get an interim in place so that we can continue with district operations. And then from there, we will go through a very thoughtful and inclusive process to identify the next superintendent of our district who would be in place then July 1, 2022. Any other board, any board members want to add anything I may have missed or anything important or any other comments? Okay. The next item on, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, so just for new business, I, I just, I need to just raise, so for several reasons, it's important that we just discuss this briefly. Don't mean to make a big deal about it. But the district, back on April 5th, shared at the board meeting, you might remember, we had, you know, Bill Wilmot, UDL, talking about our future and different plans that we had for that. Off of that, we have begun to develop what we've called a roadmap to reopening. It's important that I share with you that in addition to our planning for the future, because I want to leave the interim with a plan in place, we also have to, because the state recently has required that districts provide a reopening plan. And that reopening plan has to be presented, completed by June 23rd. If you think about it, that really is nonsensical because last year, we used every bit of the summer in order to develop task forces and so on and so forth. So how are to put a credible plan together in that amount of time when we wouldn't have had any task force groups even fully formed because school doesn't even finish until the end of the week? It's, it's yet another example of the state not helping in what it purports to be helping in any event. So part of the plan that we were going to discuss a little bit tonight was around the parent survey that we would like to put out. So the state, you might know, is requiring districts to issue a survey to staff and families and non-families, so non-family taxpayers to, and, and they have tied the completion of that survey to several indicators. So non-compliance costs us. So we are going to meet tomorrow and we are going to work very hard to try to make sure that we get that state survey, which, by the way, we nor any other district had any say in developing whatsoever. Not even, not even at all. But nevertheless, we're required to put it out. And if we don't, we get significant problems as a result. But in addition, we have developed a seven-question questionnaire for parents that essentially is in addition to the state survey because we have no guarantee that we'll get the state survey results. They're going to be aggregated. And last year, the way that they came to us was late and completely unhelpful and not Merrimack-based. So it's just, we understand people are surveyed out, but we want to just put forth seven questions that, that basically ask, what are the concerns that you have about where your student is needing to focus on this year? What are the ways that we can continue to add integrative and innovative practices to your education, to your child's education? Those kinds of things that then, the data will then get filtered back to the task forces that can then inform our emerging plan. So for June 23rd, all we'll be able to do, all any district will be able to do is provide just, you know, a sketch, a roadmap. So that was the intent to share. We do have to do that by the 21st because we have to be sure that the, that we tell the state that this was presented to the board, whatever the it is. And, and I know in the past, the board's been reluctant to, let's say, completely embrace a proposal. Your embrace of, for lack of a better word, of a proposal is not to say that you have just agreed that everything that we're going to tell you on June 20, or would have told you tonight or on June 23rd, you completely agree with. Clearly, when there's a new superintendent, you will work with that person and the task forces will continue to be up and running. We'd like to be able to give them a sign tonight that they can move forward because waiting till the 20, it just, you know. So, so anyway, not approving the plan does not lock you in. Everything that we're going to say, you have to do. But it would say that you've been presented with a plan. I mean, it's going to be a credible, a credible roadmap with a lot of details because we're going to have to have them and the stakeholder groups will always have to have their say. And I don't know what the state is thinking about cutting that group out. So anyway, so I didn't want to put out the survey tomorrow without the board just understanding that such a thing will go out. It's not controversial. It's just, you know, it's just the information that can be fed to our team. And in addition to that, we will put out a, a survey to staff as well. And, and that will go out tomorrow or Wednesday, but anyway, soon. So that, that's all. I just needed to bring that up tonight. It's quite important, timeline.
Any comments, questions? I would just ask if you could just send those surveys out to the board as just an FYI of those survey questions? Okay. Okay, Jenna?
So it's my understanding that I can make a motion during new business, is that correct?
I believe that you can.
It'd be a motion on an unposted agenda item so that there wouldn't have been time for community input. So I, I don't know what the, I mean, I don't know if it's best practice.
Do you know, Matt? I did a little bit of research on that at one point and I recall that it seemed like you could, so.
The question is, Jenna? The question, Matt, is can a, a motion be made on an item that is not on the agenda?
Under new business?
I don't believe so because you.
I'm sorry. I don't believe so because you have to, the whole, the whole purpose behind the, the agenda is kind of like the warrant for warrant articles. You can't introduce new subject matter at the deliberative session. And so the meeting, if it's not posted on the agenda, you can't have other folk come in and address it, you know, comments on agenda items. So if you're making a motion on something that's not on the agenda, by, to be doubly sure, I would wait until it gets on the agenda.
So I'm just wondering, can we waive the two-week rule? Would that help if?
Yes, you can, for, for, if you want to, if there is something on the agenda, the board has in the past voted to waive the two-week rule.
But that, that's only for consent agenda items, isn't it?
No, we could waive the, sorry. I'm sorry, we can waive the two-week rule at, if we need to vote on something that's of time-sensitive information. So say it was on the agenda for the 21st, we could say, I move to, you know, make all teachers wear bunny ears, and waive the two-week rule. But we at least posted it saying that the agenda item is that we are going to require our teachers.
Teacher to wear bunny ears, yes.
Is your item time-sensitive?
Well, what I, yeah, what I wanted to talk about is signs time-sensitive. It has to do with graduation. And I, if it's not a motion, I at least want to state it as a strong recommendation. So I don't know how you want me to do this. I'll, I'll state it this way. I'll state it as a recommendation. I, I wrote it out so that I wouldn't misspeak. Considering current exceptionally low COVID infection rates in the state, widespread vaccine availability for anyone ages 12 and over, allowing all graduates, school staff and administration and parents to be vaccinated if they so choose, the fact that graduation is an outdoor event and that our district administration has created a graduation plan that includes accommodations for anyone who is at an increased risk or continues to be uncomfortable in a crowd, I would like to recommend that we consider lifting the district-wide mask requirement for our 2021 Merrimack High School graduation ceremony for everyone involved. I don't, I, I kind of felt like it needed to be more formal because it is a district-wide policy at this point. And it would be asking for that to be lifted for the day under those considerations. Certainly, anyone who prefers to wear a mask certainly always has that option, you know, obviously, obviously. But given our COVID, current COVID landscape, I would like the board to consider lifting the mask requirement for graduation.
Comments? Lori Peters?
I would add that since the CDC has changed its guidelines regarding those who are vaccinated around ma, unvaccinated people, that gives us more freedom to choose. And I think this is an opportunity, especially at an outdoor event, to allow people to choose. If, if they've chosen to be vaccinated, then they can choose to wear a mask or not wear masks. If they've chosen not to be vac, vaccinated, they can, you know, they've made that choice to be masked. It is not the responsibility of the district to police the community. And again, people who are uncomfortable, we've made those arrangements with the waves so that they do not have to be in the stands. They are not required to be around non-family members. So we've made a great accommodation there. And I think this is an opportunity to give people a choice. And, you know, I know we don't follow other districts and things like that. We make our own decision. But a number of graduations have been masked, a number of them have been unmasked. So we've seen both in the state.
Any other comments? Shannon?
I, I think if we go this route, we need to come up with a very fast and furious communication plan around that. It's, we've set expectations with families and there's been a lot of time and planning that's gone into that. So if, you know, that's the recommendation, I mean, we can't make a motion, but if that's the request of the board, then we need to let administration at the high school know as soon as possible. I mean, I definitely, I will say, you know, I'm kind of feeling unfortunate. I got Johnson and Johnson for a couple of reasons, but it seems to be where the breakthrough occurrences of COVID are happening the most frequently. And that was the most probably mass, you know, vaccination sites that we had. So, I mean, I was, I was one of the, I'd say unlucky ones. That probably is a lesser coverage of the, of the, and we didn't get to choose what we wanted, obviously. But with all that said, I think that we have, we have to kind of go in there and reset expectations if masks are now suddenly optional because it may change the way everyone plans their Saturday.
Are you all set, Shannon?
Yeah.
Okay, I see Jenna and then Lori.
Well, just, I just wanted to speak to what Shannon said because in, in the thing that Sharon sent out to everybody under where it says masks, it says the Merrimack School District Mask Policy Remains in Place. So seniors and Merrimack High School staff members will be wearing masks for the graduation ceremony because of course they're subject, subject to that policy. But masks are only suggested for guests. So really, it's a communication that would be to staff and students and that could easily happen at the graduation rehearsal.
So are you, are you saying that the, the mask policy is suggested for guests, but staff and students would still follow that policy?
I'm, I'm just reading.
Or do you want staff and students not to have to adhere to the policy that was voted on by the board?
So the, I think what she's reading is what, from the email.
I'm, I'm just reading what Sharon wrote.
Yes.
So what my, what my recommendation would be, and because it's a policy of the board, that's why I thought I needed to make a motion in order for it to be, I don't, I don't know how to word it, but lifted for the day. But yes, I would, I would ask that for that day, that it be the same as for guests as it is for students. It's an outdoor thing, they're not in our school buildings. And, you know, everybody in that population has had the opportunity to be vaccinated, you know, under eight. Guests under 12 haven't, but masks are only suggested for them. But for the, for the seniors and for the staff and administration, everybody has had the opportunity, an ample opportunity to choose to be vaccinated or not. And therefore, to me, it feels like we could have a graduation without masks, especially since we've also added an extra layer of protect, protection with our, our waves allowing for, you know, distancing for anyone who doesn't want to sit in a crowd next to somebody who may not have a mask on, which is actually already a possibility. So it's really just the seniors, right, who are, may be vaccinated and may just, you know, are going to be sitting out in the sun for three and a half hours, may not want to have a mask on. And I'm, I mean, the town is, my understanding is the town is lifting this as of Thursday, this week. So it seems to me to be a realistic and not at all risky thing to, to ask that it be, that it be waived for, for our graduates and for staff and people that are, are there, everyone, everyone involved in graduation.
Yeah, see, it could be, as opposed to a formal motion, it could be, you know, the consensus of the board. Then if that's the feeling we get, then we can communicate that to, to Mrs. Putney and she can get the word out to the high school students.
I mean, there's, what we could do is do the vote and if that stands because it, you know, do our research. If it, if it stands as a motion because of the time sensitivity of it, then it stands. And if not, then it would be a communication that it's at least formalized by any respective votes. If that works for everyone.
Whatever makes it happen works for me. The only thing I was going to say is, you know, I think because it's new business, when you look at the timing, the CDC's new recommendations didn't come out till May 28th. That was Friday. So we wouldn't have really had time until we get the new CDC recommendations, which I'm always updating and looking at. We wouldn't know that. So that kind of goes to your point, so.
Shannon?
It was a week ago, Friday, and that was a goodness plain time to post it. So I would say that would be a, a tough sell. I, I would say, if I were to give you advice here, I would go with, you're sensing a consensus of the board to allow students and staff to go unmasked without consequence at the graduation. That seems to be the majority consensus of the board. And I think if you do that.
I'm okay with that.
It's not a directive, which means we didn't take a vote. But it seems to be that's, I think. I think, our administration can accept that as a testimony of the majority of the board and that's what should be communicated back to administration. And that way, I mean, but if it's a directive and we didn't post it, then I think, that's where I have a concern, that it would be non-compliant.
Are you okay with that approach, Jenna? It was your new business?
Yeah, absolutely. As, as long as it allows for students who choose not to wear a mask to not wear a mask and staff, same, I'm okay with that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I would just add this, it's, it's interesting, frequently over the year, we've heard, you know, about other districts. So you may not know that I have a son who's graduating from Nashua South very soon and in, in Nashua, we are limited to three guests, so all of my and my wife's family are gonna have to watch through FaceTime or not at all. So I just think it should be acknowledged that Merrimack has done way better than our district to the south when it comes to, and I'm not trying to criticize, but we're often held to the standard of, you know, Merrimack isn't doing this or that. This is a case where we're far in, in exceeding that. And I take that personally, because it's my son, but we're dealing with it. And I, we have not received much of any communication, but I believe that masks in Nashua are required. So often, we're told, you know, this or that district is doing this or that so much better, but I, I think it would be nice to acknowledge that, at least in this particular case, Merrimack, even before this motion was made, has done a lot to try to accommodate in the midst of these really difficult times.
Yeah, certainly, my motion was not a criticism in any way of.
No, I didn't take it as that. I just wanted to point out that, you know, I have a son who's a senior too and is experienced in a district that is frequently talked about as having done some innovative things, is in fact, in this particular case, not.
Okay. And I had two other new business items. One was regarding masks in the next board meeting. I'd just like to, like to add that to an agenda, like the first item on the next agenda, so that we can determine, you know, if we want to wear masks in the meetings going forward through the summer. And then I had one other warrant article that I'd like to have on the next agenda, which is just an update regarding, and an update to the public and to the board regarding the warrant articles that were not expended, that had been approved by the public for the twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one years, so that, that we could get an update on that and, because I, I don't know that we've come before the public and you had given that update. Thank you. Any other new business? Okay. Committee reports. Shannon?
It's really, not a committee report, but it's a committee report. So it's regarding, a few months ago, I gave you a committee report regarding New Hampshire School Board Association. And we had our board meeting and we meet with our constituency from DC. So a couple of weeks ago, I talked about a panel discussion in which I was on with Senator Shaheen with some board members. And following that, I got a call from Congressman Pappas's office, who wanted to follow up on the testimony of, at the board meeting regarding infrastructure funding out of the federal government. And so Congressman Pappas reached out and wanted to see our facilities and ask us some questions. And I just wanted to thank Mark and Matt for meeting with Congressman Pappas and myself to kind of follow up on that NHSBA board meeting and talk about what real infrastructure challenges we face and the federal resources that would be beneficial and, you know, the state resources that were lost and, and that delta that we're feeling. So as an added value, because we are Merrimack and we do have Saint Gobain in our, our midst, we were able to also show him our water filtration system that we were forced to install that was not offset by Saint Gobain and he's aware of that as well.
Wow, that's an interesting update. Thanks, Shannon.
You're welcome.
Any other committee reports? Oh, John?
Thank you very much, Cindy. Just want to report out on Professional Development Committee, that we had our, our last meeting and, and that of the year. And to thank all those members, we have some longstanding members that were, that are, they're going off the committee and I just wanted to recognize them and they know who they are. And also that we have completed a final draft of our professional development plan that will take us through the next five years. And that's a huge deal. So at our next board meeting, representatives from our Professional Development Committee will be here to present that plan to the board. And it's just, it's been about a three-year process of working and thank you to Dr. McLaughlin, who started this a, a long time ago. Kind of interesting little, little tidbit that I spent my first ten years in the district on professional development, went off for about eight of them that Dr. McLaughlin filled and then I came back and I've been there since. So it's, we, we had a handoff there, but this plan is our guiding future and all of our rules and regulations and how to help teachers maintain their certification and it's a great thing. So we'll be here next meeting to talk about that.
Thanks, Tom. Any other committee reports? Okay, we're moving on to the public comments on agenda items. There's no one here with us. Are there any emails? Shannon?
There is one. It's from Lindsay Tebow of Nineteen Pleasant Street, and my phone fell asleep waiting for this moment, so sorry. So, "Do you have a plan for the fall regarding masks for the kids? I'm hoping we'll have moved past the masks and would like to have the time to plan for my kids for the upcoming year." Lindsay Tebow, Nineteen Pleasant Street. And that third email from earlier this evening, we did not get addressed back, so we can't enter it into public comment.
But if, when that person responds, we could state it at our next meeting.
Absolutely, sure.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. So we'll go ahead and sign the manifest and I'd like to, would someone please give me a motion to go into non-public session?
I motion.
For RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, A, B, and C, in the Matthew Thornton Room, motion made by Lori Rathaus. I have a second, second by Shannon. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Lori Peters, how do you vote?
So moved.
And Jenna?
In favor.
Shannon?
In favor.
Lori?
In favor.
And I vote in favor, that carries five zero zero. Thank you and good night.